Call this meeting of the Stratford Board of Education Board at 7:15 on Monday, June 26. My name is Andrea Corcoran. I'm the board chair. We do have a quorum. I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Wiltie for the invocation of pledge.
Thank you, Mrs. Corcoran. Would you please stand?
We beseech you, Almighty God, to bless this meeting of the Board of Education. So guide and rule over our hearts and our minds that all our deliberations and decisions may be in accordance with your will and lead to the advancement and welfare of the community of Stratford for whom we serve. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiltie. Sad news, we have no student representative reports because they have gone off to enjoy their summer vacation and their exciting lives outside of our Stratford Public Schools. So we miss them and we can't wait to meet our new folks next year. There are also no presentations. And so we will move on to public forum. As of right now, I think we have a public speaker. Ms. Julian, please state your name and your Stratford address.
Robin Julian, 520 River Valley Road. Good evening. I am a 35-year veteran teacher with the Stratford Public Schools. Presently, I am a kindergarten teacher at Johnson and the elementary vice president of the Stratford Education Association. I was watching last week's meeting of the finance subcommittee, and I wanted to correct some of the statements that I heard. Members of the board asked about the duration of elementary specials such as art, music, PE, and library. Those specials will be 35 minutes long in the coming school year. And board members were concerned that this will constitute a loss for students. They were told that in the 2223 school year, most elementary schools had specials lasting only 30 minutes, and for them, a 35-minute special schedule would actually be an increase. In fact, we reached out to elementary teachers across the district, and they reported that in the school year that had just passed, school specials had a duration of 40 minutes in all eight elementary schools, and that the 30-minute specials only happened on early release days. This means that the plan discussed last week would actually be a loss of special time for students. I would also like to remind you that years ago, we had a 45-minute special. Also, during the discussion of elementary assistant principal positions, we heard that we don't have any retirements at the administrative level in the elementary school, when in fact, longtime Nichols Assistant Principal Lori de Blasio has retired, and we do wish her well. Now, we do not expect these facts to change any of the decisions made by the board, but we, in the SCA, stand in favor of transparency and fact-based decision-making, and we wanted to correct the record. Thank you.
We will move on to our administrative and executive report. Dr. Sunday, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are successfully at the end of the academic year. It's been a long year, but it's been overall a very productive year. And reflecting back in the year, there's also some things that we have learned that we will implement into our improvement efforts moving forward. Some of the highlights that I am incredibly proud of, as you all know, dating back to last spring, we, the Board of Education adopted a new strategic plan that would guide the direction of our work. And this year, we began the process of implementing many aspects of the board's priorities reflected in that strategic plan. In the fall, this administration will make a presentation to the Board of Education to highlight some of the progress that are aligned to the strategic priorities. Of particular note, I am incredibly proud of our professional staff for the work that they did this year, really leaning into the instructional work that we set the stage for. The results and how it played out for our students were positive across the system, and I think this was importantly crucial in the year where we received the Alliance designation. We closed the year with an exceptional graduation at both Stratford High School and Banell High School, sending off more than 500 newly minted alumni into the world. We're confident in what they have the capability to achieve once they leave our community, but we're hopeful that in time, they'll make their way back to Stratford to continue to strengthen this community. The Board of Education recently adopted its budget. I would like to make a personal, take a personal moment to express appreciation to so many people across our community for coming out and voicing their advocacy and support. We are now in a place where we feel extremely good compared to where we're at in March entering next school year. As I continue to look at the work that's in front of us, as the superintendent of schools, I am confident that we will continue to step up to the plate. What I do know is that in order to do those things and meet those demands, we'll continue to take everybody. So, on behalf of my administration at Stratford Board of Education, I extend appreciation to not just our faculty and staff, many of whom are enjoying vacation right now, but to our families, our administrators, and certainly our students for being awesome. I think there's been a standard that's been set, and our work is to always push that threshold and move that standard even further to make sure that Stratford Public Schools is recognized as one of the best school systems in the state of Connecticut. And that's it for the superintendent's executive report.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Sunday? Yes, sir.
So, the state just passed some bills, SB 1, HB 5003, and HB 6762. How are those going to impact specifically Stratford's school moving forward?
Which specific bills are you referencing, if you can?
SB 1, HB 5003, and HB 6762.
I believe the bill that you're talking about was repealed, SB 1. That's my understanding, is that it was repealed. But SB 1 was a bill that was slated to reconstitute what the lower-performing school systems in the state look like. And based on the way it was proposed, it was construed that in some ways that Stratford Public Schools may not, in the future, qualify as an Alliance district. And my understanding, unless you have updated information, is that that bill has been repealed.
And I just briefly read HB 5003, and it talked about realigning some of the designations for Alliance districts, and I think in another year or two, might change the amount of schools that are going to. Is that going to, is there different reporting requirements? Is there different, I haven't, it's a long bill, so I didn't read the whole thing.
It is a long bill. And I think that's what I just referenced. It's been repealed.
Not 5003, I believe. Unless that...
One of the same.
I was just going to add that we were talking to the State Department of Ed, and we were led to believe it was repealed and to be revised. It just wasn't something that was workable immediately. So I think we all need to stay tuned, because honestly, both the Superintendent's Association as well as the School Business Officials Association usually sends us volumes of information vetting through all of this new legislation. And I know neither of us have really had a whole lot yet, so I think there is some discussion. But we do monitor it carefully, so if we hear something before you do, we'll be happy to share.
Okay, I'll follow too. I was just, so then I guess one other question. Last year, I don't know that we saw the Alliance district plan before its implementation. And I noticed, I did get a copy of it, and I noticed we had about $100,000 that went to band instruments. And I'm just curious what the thought process was behind that, and has it been successful?
Sure. One of the things that we were looking at coming of the pandemic was student engagement, okay? And we concluded that providing opportunities for kids to engage in after-school or even in-school enrichment opportunities, particularly around band and socioeconomic dynamics, would be a good way to boost engagement. I'll actually ask my colleague, Dr. Gator, to maybe speak to this. I know she's working hand in hand with our director, Dr. Boyle, on this specific project.
Thank you. We also noticed that the enrollment in our music courses, elective music courses at the high school, specifically the instructional music, had dropped. And that was one of the things we were concerned about, particularly at the middle level. And so by focusing this effort at the elementary level to provide more opportunity for students to be able to acquire an instrument, or rent an instrument, or use an instrument for a year for music lessons and that, we thought was something that we would hope would bring our numbers back up again in the instrumental music area. Dr. Amy Boyle is our coordinator of fine arts, and she's been working very hard on that. In fact, this summer is going to be the first summer that we're going to be offering instrumental music lessons as part of our summer program. So we have two music teachers who will be offering lessons at Stratford High School and at Franklin for both the elementary and for the secondary program. So we're really excited about that.
So that's a purchase program or a rental program?
The instruments were rent, were, excuse me, purchased for the district to rent them to students or allow students to use them if they demonstrated an interest. Usually in grade three going into grade four is the area where students have an opportunity to begin learning an instrument.
And is that, is that need-based? You said rent, or you, would that be the same?
Yes. And I think once before, Ms. Kupi asked, you know, if all of our schools were involved, and we were able to provide instruments for all of our elementary schools.
And were they purchased at the beginning of the year, or?
During the course of the year. First, an inventory was taken, and so each of the music instrument, excuse me, each of the music teachers was able to suggest the instruments that they would need. What took some time was, you know, getting the vendor that we could, you know, we had to go for RFP. Thank you. No, it's RFQ. And so that took some time. And as a result of that, though, we're really excited about being able to offer students an opportunity for that. I think we're also, we also purchased some more recorders so that third graders would be able to have that experience as well.
Sorry.
So, Adam has third grade.
It's not a good, so with that, that program hasn't been started because of the timeframe? We purchased the equipment, and now we're?
No. Over the course of the year, yes. It has been started, definitely. But it took a little bit of time because we had to get, make sure that we were getting our best, the best price we could get, and for the number of instruments and that, that we were.
Are those instruments being utilized? Is there some tracking as far as?
Yes. Definitely.
And then one last question. On the, on the last page of it, and item B is that the filing of this application has been authorized by the applicant's governing body, and the undersigned official has been duly authorized to file this application for and on behalf of said applicant and otherwise to act as authorized representative of the applicant connection with this applicant. But I read this as that we are supposed to authorize not only the signature, but the plan itself. Is there a different interpretation than that?
Sure, I can speak to that. So if you recall, one of my biggest things that I did a few springs ago was identify the priorities of the Alliance plan, okay? I introduced that to the board, introduced that to the community. The design of the plan was constructed by certified staff members, okay? Under the jurisdiction of the Board of Education, the superintendent is authorized to design, approve, and sign and submit grants to the State Department of Education for a review. We have been working hand in hand with the State Department of Education since we received the Alliance designation. And again, after identifying those priority buckets for our Alliance plan, I assigned that work for the construction of the plan to Dr. Gator and her team. Together with the cross-section of coordinators, administrators, and some teachers, they designed a plan, which I now reviewed and then I'll give it my approval, and it was submitted to the State Department of Education against those priorities that was publicly shared. And in the recent conversation, I know myself and Ms. Magini have been having conversations with the state over the last couple of years, one of the feedback that we got from state officials was that our plan was one of the easiest to review and approve because of its design. And I'll say this, after a year of implementing the plan, there are some very real improvements that we've realized because it's a well-instructed plan. And we'll report on that to the board in the early fall.
And then just, I know it's later on the agenda, but residency, can we get an updated report at year end now that the school year's ended, just before you were sure?
I can certainly do it now. We can wait till it.
If you have it, then we'll wait, yeah.
Ms. Wiltie? Thank you. To Mr. Hendrick's point, that was an exact question we asked at the CAVE Conference in November, right? We were able to meet with Alliance peers, and we asked about design, program plan, who authorized it, how it was implemented. And we felt comfortable with the instruction and the design that they provided. The second thing I just wanted to ask, for the discipline plan, I know that there's been a lot of work with the supervisors, I'm sorry, Superintendent's Advisory Committee and with our administration. When should we expect to see the outcome of that?
It's near finish. I know Dr. Daniels and Ms. gorgeous have been working on it. I believe you folks met with the last cohort of parents in that group the week of graduation, I believe? So there's some fine tuning to do, but we're working on a rollout plan to make sure that every stakeholder, students, staff, and families are familiar with what we're trying to accomplish through this plan for the fall.
So probably August, what, presentation?
Definitely August.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the topic about the music piece of the Alliance program. So I brought this up several months ago in one of our curriculum committee meetings because we received some information about the plan. And my question was, why didn't we approach it from the standpoint of using those funds to offer music, let's say, in third grade versus buying additional instruments? Because we do have an inventory of instruments already, maybe not in the greatest condition, but we know the importance of music and academics. And we know over the years, our district has lost music service from third grade, where kids are now having to wait until fourth grade. So why couldn't we use that money to offer it earlier than we're doing right now versus investing it in additional instruments?
It might also be a function of staffing in addition to the instruments, probably? I would assume.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not interested in, you know, like, maybe this, maybe that. I'm just, I want to hear, like, what options were considered and why something wasn't viable? And maybe can we look at it from that perspective for future years? Because we're not going to just instantly come out of Alliance, you know, within a year, right? So how can we consider those factors in our approach?
So I'll say this, I think, basically this thing, but I think the latter is definitely something we're going to lean heavily into, is considering it for future years, right? To the point of restoring the Alliance district. So, you know, the spirit of the Alliance district plan is to innovate for improvement, right? And early exposure is part of that. I think when we were going through this process, we were still in that frame of the pandemic where with executive orders and a mask and all those different things. And we knew that student engagement was significantly hampered, and it's basically where we needed to improve it. The arts is one way to obviously establish a sense of belonging for kids and make that connection to school. There were some good ideas. We thought good about it. And we launched this as part of our Alliance plan. I think from a visionary standpoint, you know, that early introduction to music in third grade, making sure it moves across the school system horizontally, is something that we can certainly pour a good amount of energy into.
Great, thank you.
And let me just add from this music parent's heart, hearing all this discussion about increasing access to music and musical instruments really makes me happy because I know sometimes the cost of instrument rental can be a barrier to a child picking up an instrument. It can be really pricey, you know, when it gets down to brass tacks. I know some other districts have a supply of instruments and charge, you know, $15 rental for the year, which is...
We do. We do have that.
That's great. I know, I had to pay for our rental.
We have it here.
But that's wonderful. So if we can expand that and then expand, I mean, any way to get the kids, you know, exposure, because not every kid is an athlete. My children aren't. And so music is a way to sort of, you know, let your soul shine. So that's great. Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Sunday? Great. Seeing none, we will move on to Ms. Magini and her chief operating officer's report.
We are in the midst of a busy part of our year as we say goodbye to our colleagues, our staff and faculty off of the summer. The business office has a lot going on, but we are in the midst of finishing fiscal year 23 financials. We're preparing for the upcoming audit as well as the year-end state report that, as you may recall, is due by the end of August. In addition, we're truly grateful to the board for approving the fiscal year 24 budget last week. It gave us a little bit of time to make all those necessary adjustments in the financial software system so that we could actually set up our budget for fiscal year 24, allowing the schools to start entering supply orders for textbooks and workbooks and just general instructional supplies so that they have enough time for things to get in for the start of the new school year. It also allowed us to begin the payroll process that needs to usually be done by the Tuesday of that payroll week. And our next payroll is on July 7th, and with the 4th of July weekend in the minutes of that, our weekday. It is a challenge, needless to say, but the staff is incredible, as I often share with you, and they're confident they'll accomplish all that needs to be done within that timeframe. Also, I've been working, as I mentioned, at the finance committee meeting this evening with our food service director for the equipment replacement project. And quite honestly, we really are excited about replacing some of that very old equipment that we have in kitchens throughout the district. I think it will benefit all of us, from the district to our students, to even our staff being a little bit happier about having equipment that actually works 99% of the time. And lastly, I just wanted to share something on a little bit of a personal note. I plan to continue to serve. I was actually elected once again to the SFO Commission, and it's with the International Association of School Business Officials. This will be my third term, and it is a certification program that is really near and dear to my heart. I value the certification, and also I work to promote this designation throughout the profession. I was actually one of the first school business officials in the state to earn what's called a Certified Administrator of School Finance and Operations Certification. It's referred to as an SFO. The process to earn it, and I actually took this exam 10 years ago, but it involves a comprehensive two-part, four-hour exam, and it covers content involving the management of accounting systems, financial and budget planning and analysis, risk management, school facilities management, HR functions, and management of ancillary services, including transportation and food service. And that might sound very familiar to you because that's basically what I oversee here in Stratford, other than the HR functions and facilities, not directly, fortunately. But this national certification is recognized actually through the US and Canada. And I've been involved in encouraging my colleagues throughout Connecticut to work towards the certification. And I have facilitated local CASBO exam workshops, written articles in our monthly newsletters, and I've just simply served as a resource for my colleagues. And I think it's really important, particularly with all that we struggle with in our state, if not nationally, with limited tax dollars that we're all vying for from the town side to the Board of Ed side, whether you have the police department or the Department of Education within the town, there's only limited dollars. So hopefully, I feel that the work that I will be doing over the next two years will just continue, I hope, to provide you with more confidence in my abilities to be knowledgeable about what we're doing, staying on top of things, and just simply being completely transparent. And I have tried to do that over the last few years, but I really do feel that having this designation and working with my colleagues as closely as I do is value-added for all of us. So I just thought you'd be interested on that. Thank you.
That's right. Amazing. Any questions for Ms. Magini? I know, we know it comes to you. That's our personal.
I know about personal. I don't need to argue that fact with you.
We'll move on to Dr. Gita, which is her final teaching report.
Thank you. I'd like to take a few minutes just to shine a light on some of the activities and professional learning that our staff engaged in. We said goodbye to students on June 14th, but our staff was here for the 15th and 16th. June 15th was a district planned day, and most of our teachers and staff members were involved in the same activity, in viewing the documentary, the first in a series of documentaries on defining us, entitled Defining Us. And this particular series focuses on how education, both traditional and non-traditional, can play a pivotal role in developing pathways and solutions on the social issues that make us most human. Our first documentary tells the story of students and teachers who are improving equity and racial justice in America. And after we watched the film, then I'm going to say, and Yvonne Temple was responsible for putting together this activity for us. And I'm going to guess that maybe there were probably 400 people that participated, at least in that activity. And then they were all, we all broke into breakout groups for discussion about the film and how that can benefit us and some of the conversations that we have here in Stratford. So that was a very, almost like a convening in a way, an opportunity for us as a district to get together and speak about that. At the same time, we had two other activities going on. Training in the Northwest Evaluation Association MAP program, which is a standardized achievement test which measures what students know and informs what they're ready to learn by an adaptive assessment. So that is, that took place, as well as the SAAP program, which is, was actually a four-day online program, but it was obviously facilitated by somebody from the organization. SAAP stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, and it's a model that's research-based, and it's validated instructional model for lesson design and delivery that has proven effective in addressing the academic needs of English learners throughout the United States and around the world. So individuals who are participating in that, it was the first day of their session, and then they participated in three days, actually, this, actually this coming week. In addition, after, in the afternoon sessions, we had items and activities connected to preschool thinking skills, purposeful play at the primary level, interpreting literacy data, Portrait of a Graduate was a big, was a big activity that played over and over again during the day with different groups of teachers and administrators. Number Corners, Content Area Focus on Curriculum and Assessment Updates, are looking at the database, the CTSETS database, which we've been working, working on, or actually our, specifically our PPS department, 504s are being entered into the CTSETS program with the State Department. The multi-tiered systems of support had multiple sessions that were, people had a chance to actually look at the new system. Shout out to Dr. Daniels and to the tech department in helping put that together. New assessment systems, and also school counseling. And then on Friday, that's a lot, right? And then on Friday, the sessions were building-based, and so each building submitted their proposal, and we had things going. Most places started off with a strategic operating plan and looking at how their school improvement plans connected with that. Ruler was one of the other sessions. Danielson was frequently, Danielson is Teacher Evaluation Rubrics. Actually, they're called Frameworks. That will be a big part of our process, the district process, next year. NIASC accreditation was a big topic for the high schools, and the MTSS overview as well. So a lot of learning, a lot of engagement, and, you know, a shout out to all of those who put in pro- So a lot of learning, a lot of engagement, and a shout out to all of those who put in proposals and who stepped up and took the lead in helping our district in areas that we've spent a lot of time this year and we will continue to spend more time next year, all in the effort of trying to help our students be successful.
Any other questions for Dr. Gita?
Sure. And I might have misunderstood this, but the way I understood it is next year we're going to tier all of our students. Is that correct?
No, I'm sorry. It's called Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. So actually looking at student data, and there's been a lot of effort this year on looking at the data that we're using, making sure that it's the right data to indicate whether or not students are being successful or moving forward. And if we find that there are students who are not, then a building-based team looks at those students, looks at their data, and if they need support interventions, the student is placed into a tier. And if that isn't, over several weeks, if that particular intervention isn't being successful, then they will qualify for another level of intervention. So just the opposite, students are all, actually, all students are tiered because Tier One is actually what's happening in the classroom. So looking at how classroom teachers, tutors, individuals will provide support for students if they're struggling on a particular activity or learning. Tier One is regular classroom.
So will we move all the students to Tier One and start over?
They're currently in Tier One. That's what happens in the classroom. The classroom teachers, teaching students, using instructional strategies that they know are important to help students learn to read or learn their mathematics. And then if, after using those instructional strategies, students still seem to be struggling, then they'll look at it a little more carefully to see what else might need to be done.
So a student who's Tier Three this year, graduating this year as a Tier Three, will he come to school or she come to school next year as a Tier One? Start the process over, or is there some carryover?
There may be carryovers. Obviously, that child will be, the data team will get together and look at where the child is as well. And I would think that maybe, if you would like a presentation next year on what MTSS looks like.
Don't fall for that. So you send it out.
The question really is, I think, for those who are not in teaching or involved in education, I think that's a very reasonable question about what does a multi-tiered system of support look like.
I know, I think it's some of the younger staff members. The MTSS was a mainstay of their education. But just, yeah, I guess you guys did the PV, and there was just some comments that I heard and didn't know. Just trying to understand the whole process.
Yep. And Dr. Daniels took the lead on that, that as the, in her role that she had this year, that was one of her main projects. So they've done an awful lot of work with that, and I think it's really going to benefit our students quite a bit.
You fell for Linda's, one of Linda's isms. She does that.
Well, I want to get you to the right source.
Any other questions for Dr. Gita? Ms. Carol Fabian?
No, I just wanted to maybe help clarify. So the MTSS is basically what used to be RTI, SRBI. It's our Intervention Program for Students. So all students in general education are considered Tier One. Every Tier One intervention isn't really intervention. It's just you're good teaching, right? Like, are they getting what they need? If they are not, then that's when they rise to the Tier Two intervention, where we'll put in tutors or additional things where they'll get additional services. If that is still not working after it's been evaluated and data's been collected, then they move to Tier Three, where they get even more additional supports put into place. And then again, if that does not continue to work, then that's a child that would be evaluated for special education.
And then each child with, say, a Tier Three intervention?
Well, so you move through the tiers. So like, some children, after a Tier Two intervention, it works and they've caught up to what they need, and they go back on to Tier One. Some kids move into Tier Three. Some kids, if they were put into Tier Three maybe later in the year, might come back to school in that kind of level and begin the supports and then see where they are, and then they get reevaluated. After a certain amount of time, they would be recommended for a PBC.
At the end of the year, they're reevaluated and to determine how the next year's going to start.
But it's like a fluid process.
So there's no blank slate, clean the slate?
No, no. I mean, the work's going to continue with them where they are.
It will continue. And you know, one of the things that we've done as our commitment to data-driven instruction is an assessment at the start of the year, right? Because there is some kind of learning that does happen. You either grow in some ways over the summer or you experience summer slide. One of the things we do do is try to assess at the start of the year to make sure we have appropriate placements, and that now drives, becomes the basis for the work of the data teams across our courses.
Great. Before we move on, I know that myself as board chair and Ms. Carol Fabian as Chair of Curriculum have a few things we wanted to say to Dr. Gita. We'll be quick, I promise. But Lisa, do you want to go first?
Sure. Dr. Gita, on behalf of the Curriculum Committee again, I just want to thank you for your dedication and support to the teaching and learning for the students in Stratford for the last eight years. While I'm sure this is a bittersweet time for you, we wish you the best in your retirement and hope you get to explore all your other passions as well as enjoy the time you will now have with your family. So we wish you the best. Congratulations.
Second, what Ms. Carol Fabian said. And I also just like to thank Dr. Gita for her many years spent in Stratford. You've gifted the district not just with your knowledge and your expertise, but also with your kindness and with your calm spirit. I've been working with you for a while, both on school readiness and now on the board, and you've always impressed me with your dedication to our students, our staff, our schools, and our community. You will be deeply missed, and we are wishing you much happiness in your adventures beyond Stratford.
Thank you. I won't put this up on anybody else's head. It seems like last week that I was sitting at a board meeting being introduced as the new Assistant Superintendent. Time passes quickly when you're working with those who have a common goal and purpose and are dedicated to the cause. I am appreciative of the support that this board and past boards have given to teaching and learning. The superintendents I've worked for have always listened to the information I've provided and then made difficult decisions that they had to make. Stratford educators work hard on behalf of their students and participate in professional learning to learn new ways to meet their students' needs. We all know the challenge that the pandemic presented. Assisting Stratford educators, support personnel and families were the IT department, the nurses, our secretaries, our custodians, and our community partners. Stratford met the challenge because we all work together, and I expect that moving forward, Stratford will continue to do so. It's been an honor, a great honor, to be part of this community. I've learned a lot. So thank you all.
Thank you. We will move on to our consent agenda. I'm going to take meeting minutes and personnel documents separately. So I will approve a motion, I will accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our meetings on May 22nd, 2023, on June 5th, 2023, and also on June 21st, 2023.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Wiltzy, second by Ms. Cupy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye against, abstained. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to the personnel document. I will entertain a motion to accept this month's personnel document.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Carol Fabian, second by Ms. Cupy. Any discussion on the personnel document? Yes, ma'am.
Just a question. How many open positions do we have as of the end of the year?
I will defer to our HR director, Ms. Brown.
So I agree. Everything will point at time, so I can get you that information, but I don't have it as of June 30th.
Okay. June 30th, that would be good. Thank you.
But if my understanding is correct, it's a lot of, there's a lot of CIA's that are unilled.
Right, right.
Right. We do have, I think currently we have posted about 20 CIA positions that are vacant. But the teacher positions that we've been posting for this next coming school year, we have hired for some of those. So I'd have to look and see what was actually going to be vacant as of June 30th.
Great. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye against, abstained. Motion passes seven zero. We shall move on to items for action and discussion. Our first item is the budget transfer that has been forwarded to us with a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. And so I will entertain a motion to accept budget transfer number one, which is proposed transfer to cover various safety cafeteria maintenance upgrades in the district, and the total budget transfer amount is $342,629. So moved by Ms. Cupy, second by Mrs. Wiltzy. Any discussion on the budget transfer? Oh, yes. Did you have a question, Mrs. Vadel?
No.
Sorry. All right. Mr. Henrick, did I miss anything?
Do we want to just list the things that were part of it for this meeting?
Ms. Mancini, would you mind detailing some of the items of the budget transfer we're covering? Thank you so much.
Okay. These items will include an air conditioning unit at our server room at Worcester. And I'm sorry.
We'll have a conference.
Thank you. I just can't put my fingers on it at the moment, so I apologize. And then at Worcester, at the nurse's office, it will also be for cabling for the vape system, sensors, and all the secondary schools. Thank you, Dr. Gita. And the school signage project, as well as a walk-in freezer project that will be located at Lydon.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other discussion?
For those who weren't following that meeting, signage project is... Brand new.
School system.
School signs.
School system.
And to improve the ones that are falling apart. Yes, that is right. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll have a rule call vote. Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Vadel?
Yes.
Mr. Henrick?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes seven zero. We will move on to item number two, which is proposed curriculum. I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed curriculum, which is the Yukon English 1007. So moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mrs. Wiltzy. Discussion, Ms. Carol Fabian, would you mind detailing that a bit for us?
Sure. So the Yukon English 1007 course is one of our AP courses that is offered during senior year. It is, students receive a Yukon ECE credits. It is the Seminar in Studio and Academic Writing in Multimodal Composition. Our staff worked on writing this alongside the Yukon professors and other teachers in the state that offer this at their high schools to align it with the changes that Yukon made to their freshman English or language and writing course. This course will teach composition through multiple forms of literacy, including rhetorical, digital, and information literacies necessary for 21st century context. It is, learning tasks that will be involved will help students to analyze the influence of various elements that some have on someone's identity, fictional, real life, and self. It'll be a good reflection and learning to write at the college level.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a rule call vote. Mr. Henrick?
Yes.
Ms. Vadel?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item number three. I will entertain a motion to approve the Spanish II curriculum.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Cupy?
No. Amy.
Oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Cupy. Discussion, Ms. Carol Fabian, would you mind?
Sure. So Spanish II is an updating of the curriculum. It is addressing the reading, speaking, writing, and cultural aspects of the Spanish language as students progress through to the next level, Spanish II. It incorporates our Portrait of a Graduate and how those skills are intertwined within that language development.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a rule call vote. Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Vadel?
Yes.
Mr. Henrick?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes seven zero. Moving right along to item number four. I will entertain a motion to approve the French II curriculum.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by...
I'll second.
His ear is clogged.
I'm in that line of sight where you're...
All right. Discussion, Ms. Carol Fabian, would you mind?
No.
Can I start a recap?
So the French II is very similar to the Spanish II, except in French. It will be working on reading, speaking, writing, and culture. It is also aligned to our Portrait of a Graduate and aligning those lifelong skills within the French language.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll have a rule call vote. Mr. Henrick?
Yes.
Ms. Vadel?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes seven zero. We'll have some more discussion around this next one. Number five, I will entertain a motion to approve the Intu Reading Program as forwarded with a favorable recommendation from the Curriculum Committee.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Cupy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Carol Fabian. We will have discussion on this. Do we think it might be beneficial perhaps for Ms. Schmidt to give us a little update on this? Let you drop the hook, Ms. Carol Fabian?
Sure, I'm ready.
She's ready too.
No, go ahead.
So as... Sorry.
Good evening. So as you know, this date mandated that we have to adopt one of the seven reading programs. So over the course of the year, we went through many, many workshops to look at what the science of reading is. We also had an opportunity to meet with the vendors of the programs, and in doing that, we put together multiple committees of many different stakeholders to use a rubric that we were trained with CES. That original team took that rubric and trained the rest of our stakeholders. So I want to say we had over 40 people. They were made up of teachers, administrators, parents. We had two Board of Ed members there. We had our Special Education Department there. We had our EL Department there as well. Dr. Daniels was there. I also asked Yvonne to come in and look at our materials. In doing that, there was one program that stood out more than any of the others, and that was the Uta Midland Intu Reading. We used a rubric, five being the highest and one being the lowest, and in all the categories of the science of reading. And what that is, is our foundational skills and phonemic awareness, our informational and narrative reading. Is it balanced in the program? Is there phonics embedded in the program? Is there writing embedded in the program? Is there fluency? Is there speaking and listening? The other thing I asked many of the teachers to do, and we also had our SEA member here as well, if you are a brand-new teacher and you have to open this program, can you use it? And everybody in that room said, absolutely. It is a program that I could teach. More importantly, can the students access the information that the teacher is teaching? Because that's what this is about. It's about our students. And is the program going to reach our students Tier One? And that's the piece that we were purchasing this for, all of our students Tier One. So in the rubric, in every element of the science of reading, this program scored higher than a four. So I want to say it ranged between 4.0 and 4.4, somewhere around there. So I am asking tonight for the Board of Education to put forward for us the Intu Reading Program for our students first, for our teachers to be able to use the materials to follow the program in order to have students access the reading materials that are in this program.
Will this be rolled out wide to every single K-3 student, or is this being piloted next year?
So we're going to do what's called a soft launch next year. And what that is, is I talked to Dr. Sunday about this. We have sister schools that are set up. What we would like to do is have two kindergarten teachers, two first-grade teachers, two second and two third. And the reason for that is, is that then I can meet with the teachers monthly during their PLC time to say, how did this unit go? Talk to me about what kind of professional development do you, as the teacher, need? Let's look at your student data. What does it say? So we can say, what do we need to do with this unit in order to reach our students? So we're calling it a soft launch so that we can start that, gather our data, not to... So we're calling it a soft launch so that we can start that, gather our data, not to vet the program, because that's already been done by the State Department of Education. What we're looking for is how are we going to roll this out system-wide the following year? What is our plan to do that?
Great, thank you. Yes, Ms. Cupe?
Could you explain for us, are we teaching a program or are we using a program to assist with teaching? Like maybe clarify...
Correct. So we teach our standards first, and that's the most important thing that we do. We use the program as a means to teach reading to our students. So it's our resource.
Pedagogy still drives the work.
If a brand-new teacher could take this and open, you know, open the program up and teach it, and if we're so confident in this program and it was like years above the rest, why are we soft launching it next year and not rolling it out to everybody?
I can take that. It's expensive. It's expensive. That's the simple answer. And I know I say that in jest, but you know, one of the things that this committee, I've been really impressed with how many people contributed in this committee's work. And as Ms. Schmidt mentioned, there was more than 40 people. I know it came to the curriculum committee. I've had offline conversations with Ms. Carol Fabian, who is a reading specialist, a reading expert. You know, one of the things that we do have to do is that when you talk about a school system that is the 15th largest school system in the state, we have to be very deliberate and intentional about how we implement and how we launch things. The conversation I've had with all of our administrators since I've been here is, you can have some of the most brilliant people put designs together, but if it's not implemented with efficacy, then the plan is likely to struggle. When we think about our K3 work that we do have to do around this specific program, it's large in scale, and there's one or two implications. We're not just looking at the work that kids engage in and how they grow, but where are they going to be eight years from now? So the idea of this soft launch is to make sure that we focus on implementation strategies so we can scale it out appropriately in the year to come. The program's estimate, and I know we've had this conversation offline, is pretty high, so we want to be deliberate about that. If you recall, I think maybe two or three board meetings ago, you asked a specific question about this program, and I shared with you that we submitted an extension to the State Department of Education. We were granted that extension for one year. So we're going to use that year to make sure we have a cogent design, and when we're ready to launch system-wide horizontally and vertically, we're ready to go.
I follow that. You mentioned expense to start. Where's the expense coming from?
We have the budget for it. This board has the budget for it.
But for this... For the soft launch?
We have a grant.
No, 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 for...
We have a grant, and I'm going to ask Ms. Schmidt to speak to that.
Sure. I'm currently working on a grant with Dr. Clemmie, and the state has awarded our district $125,000 through this grant for the soft launch. So we are working on that grant right now so that we'll be able to purchase the materials and the professional development that's going to come for this soft launch.
That grant was awarded already?
No, well, it's...
Or we had an appointment?
They already told us how much we're getting.
We've been informed of how much the staff of public schools will be awarded.
And then going forward to the full launch, then that would be a budget consideration for the 24, 25 this whole year?
Okay. You've mentioned, you know, sort of piloting it, right? And taking that approach, and I do appreciate that approach because I think in the past we've seen where we rolled things out without thoughtful implementation, for lack of a better, you know, term. And then we have to, you know, shift and cut, and it's just a mess, right? So I like this approach of rolling it out in sort of that phase and assessing it before you do it district-wide, so.
I think we're ahead of the curve. I like the energy that led by Sue Schmidt and her team that the district has poured into this. This year, we were invited to be part of a program that was sponsored by the State Department of Education and the Connecticut Association of School Superintendent SO program. So we already have some lessons learned. Dr. Daria Nichols and her team really championed the work for the district. So we're reflecting on that work, refusing it, and then with what we're looking to accomplish with inter-reading, and then next year we'll have a soft launch. We'll reflect on the work, and we should have something finalized by next spring for a scale-out plan across the school system.
As it's assessed, is there a chance that it's assessed and decided that maybe this isn't the program that the district wants to use? Or is this...
I think we're pretty committed at this point in time. You know, we've been vetting this out for the last couple of months, and again, it's risen up to the curriculum committee. Feel pretty good that it's come with a recommendation to the board, and based on the counsel of our experts, our reading specialists, you know, Ms. Schmidt, I feel pretty good about the program we do have in front of us.
And just to clarify, we had to choose one out of seven, right?
Correct.
It was only since it wasn't the world of programs, it was just these prescribed seven programs. Yes, sir.
So you had said expensive. Do you have a number? Which type of number is going to be?
Yeah. Project estimate is roughly a million, a little bit more than a million dollars. Because we have a $1.3 million surplus this year. Couple other questions. I like how you slapped that in there, Mike.
Perhaps, is that something that we can put in the educational reserve fund and then use to...
It might be a conversation worth having with the town.
Sure.
You know, I don't know, but I know our timeframes.
Those thoughts did cross our mind.
Yeah. So Teachers College is a program we've been using. I know some people have stubbornly held on to it. Based on the rubric, it's performed poorly, and we've come to this point, not because of our own actions, but because of a mandate from the state of Connecticut. And so as I look at this chart, I wonder, if the state hadn't mandated that we move in this direction, would we be... Would we have continued to stick to this program that some people have so stubbornly held on to, which I think, you know, fails our students, and is probably maybe part of the reason why our scores are down. And I think that this should be done on an annual basis, district-wide, is looking at these programs, developing these things. But we're moving into a program that's significantly better. I don't know how long this HM...
Miflin.
Has been around.
The company's been around for a long time. They have multiple programs.
All established.
And well-studied.
And can I just clarify that this rubric isn't data-based? It's not student performance-based? It's just based on...
Right, rubric that all of the people who evaluated all the different programs, the different components that it offered.
Yeah.
It's not based on the performance of the use of each program. It's based on, does it have components that we are looking to move toward that will meet the needs without having to supplement with so many other programs?
Ms. Fabian, may I clarify, not all the people, but the people here on the team that we had...
So it's way better. My point being, you know, hopefully moving forward, we'll be more open-minded to looking at different options instead of being mandated by the state to move into a direction that's going to better serve our students. I guess would be my point.
So I can share this. All right. I think you bring up a good point, and I'll say this, as one of my leadership expectations with our leaders, certainly at the cabinet level, is continuously engaging in reflections to whether or not programs or practices are working well for us, right? Just as a general practice for improvement. When I first got here last year, I believe Ms. Cupe had mentioned, you know, how do we assess whether or not we're getting a return on investment? Right? If you all recall that conversation. And the return on investment is not necessarily dollars and cents per se. It also can be reflected on student performance, right? So we've had those conversations. Matt Rivers has been working with a few other people in cabinet to make sure we also assess it across organizations, even with digital programs that we do have. Usage rates can contribute to that. And ultimately, for us as a school system, since this is what we are and this is what we do, the ultimate litmus test is how you achieve in student performance. That's the ultimate return on investment. So in order to stay committed to that piece, we have to continuously evaluate programs and see if they yield the returns that we want. So the short answer to that is yes.
Agreed.
Yeah, but also just be mindful that statewide, there's a large percentage of students who are failing reading, and that is why they stepped in. It's not necessarily like a Stratford thing, or, you know, I understand the point that you're making, which is completely valid, but across the entire state, a large portion of students are failing reading. Like they have the ability to learn to read, but for some reason, it's not happening. And so that's why they're jumping in and mandating that we do this, because there are some districts where they have high, you know, percentage of students who are passing, but maybe 10% who are failing, and it's kind of like, no, you can't forget that 10%. You have to do something to bring them up as well. So that's kind of part of the, you know, thought process behind this initiative.
Awesome. And part of my thought process too, and I appreciate, I don't care what the rest of the state... I only care what Stratford's doing. And I think we as a district need to stop saying, you know, I think everybody in every industry, everything they do, needs to stop comparing themselves to the rest of the world and say, other people are failing, it's okay, and say, no, I want to be at the top of the heap, and what do I need to do on a daily basis to get myself to the top of the heap? And I appreciate this exercise, and I think it was awesome, and it gives us a great, a great view of what's possible. And I think, I think there are multiple other opportunities for us to, before the state mandates, for us to move in a different direction. And as Dr. Sunday's always saying, he wants to be the best, well, I think this gives us an indication that there's a lot of room for growth, but we need to be proactive, and that's just my other point.
So I completely agree with you, and as Dr. Sunday said, since I've been on this board, I've been pushing for us to evaluate the things that we're doing. Like we have to be looking at how we're doing with everything, right? Our approach. And I think the other thing that maybe I didn't say it as clearly, is that we could have been considered a top district, right? And we would still have to go through this process and change the program that we're using because the state mandated. There are some districts where they are highly ranked, and they have to go through this and change their program because the state came in. So I'm not saying, you know, I'm caring about other districts or, you know, not prioritizing Stratford or whatever, but it's just something that's going on across the entire state, and we have to consider that as well.
And just to note, I don't need to be the best. I need Stratford kids to be the best.
That's us, we are, we are... And to your other point is student achievement, and that's our only goal. And as the students achieve, then our teachers will be inspired, and they'll be more fulfilled in their work, and as they're supported and given programs that work and help them accomplish their jobs, they'll do a better job, which will be better for our students. So it's, it's just a big cycle that makes everything better for our students to make them, to give them the best educational opportunity we can possibly give.
Well said.
Very nice. Any other questions regarding this program? Ms. Schmidt, thank you so much. You can sit down now.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
So we will have a rule call vote. Ms. Cupe?
Yes.
Ms. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Vidal?
Yes.
Mr. Henrick?
I will say yes, and will strongly suggest we look at tying up some of those funds to move this out quicker.
Do we know? Thank you. And chair votes yes, motion passes seven to zero. We will move on to item number six. I will entertain a motion to approve the AIP Honey Spot House project.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Cupe?
That's seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Vidal. Let's have some discussion around this first. Can we have a recap from one of our administrators just about the AIP Honey Spot House project? For those who might not be following along with all the many meetings.
Sure. I can do the initial recap, and then perhaps you can give some content on the fiscal plan.
Yep.
Right? So we have an opportunity here with an expiring agreement with Aspire to regain the Honey Spot, the old Honey Spot School. We have a population of our kiddos who, with the programs we have right now, we feel we're positioned to utilize this asset and make the programs far more structured and far more robust. And in the presentation that we made during the special meeting to the board, we covered some of the highlights, and this board just covered some of the highlights. And I know there was a presentation also provided to the planning committee, it sounds like that, that presentation went well. And I also am under the understanding that board members were able to visit the campus a few days back. But the programs that we're looking to house at this multi-program facility will be our homebound tour, our continuing education project uplift will also be there as well. And then also our students, our expelled students will have a central space to then to receive educational services. And also we are examining the programs for high school suspended students. In all, we estimate that more than 400 students will circulate through that building. It's a rich program that I'm excited to launch, and I know the team has been working incredibly hard around the infrastructure of the facility, and perhaps Mr. Rizier can give an update to the board.
Sure. As Dr. Sunday said, some of the board members last Wednesday, they took a walk in the school. So it does need an uplift. We're going to be taking the ceiling out, replacing it with a drop ceiling, changing the lighting that now is a surface mount. We're going to have recessed lights like this. The flooring in the place is fine, it just needs to be stripped and waxed. So data on the IT side, we need to upgrade all that, and bring all, you know, all new. We'll also be putting a complete security system, cameras outside, inside, changing the lights on the outside to upgrade to a better lighting. The whole, it should make the whole inside look great once we're done, better than what it was. And as your folks saw, Mike, I think you agree, the school itself is not in bad shape outside of the uplift.
Yeah, and I think, you know, a point to emphasize is, you know, we're going to engage in some of these improvement work out of funds that will not be a burden to taxpayers.
Yes, we approved, if I'm correct, the majority, if not all, for funding via a budget transfer earlier in this...
And that's...
Yes, 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 sir. Ms. Wiltzy?
I have two questions. Will there be signage as to what this building is now being repurposed to be?
That's a recent conversation that we had as well. And we are certainly going to move in a direction with signage.
Okay. My only concern would be the labeling and isolation of the members, the students that are inside. I'd just keep that into consideration. And the second thing is staffing. What is staffing going to look like in the building?
That I...
Yeah, well, you know, I think Ms. Borges is going to have a good chunk of the oversight of the programs that operate out of the building. I know the special meeting she did, I don't have those hard numbers in front of me, so I don't want to speak out of context, but she did touch on staffing during that time.
I do have that issue to share. As she explained to the board, it's basically a shifting of positions that are in existence, and I'm going by her presentation, so it would be a special ed teacher, a tutor, a secretary, the project uplift staff will be housed there. And the only positions that potentially we will have to actually hit the general operating wing out next year are climate specialists. We can continue to take, we'll need two additional, and we will continue to take that cost out of that server for one more year, so then we'll have to reexamine everything fiscally So then we'll have to reexamine everything fiscally or 25.
Has, I'm sorry, one additional. Has the Stratford Police Department been a partner in possible conversations as far as staffing or support?
They may have to some degree, and I don't want to answer definitively, but that Project Uplift grant was definitely a partnership with the police department. So I will give Heather a heads up to be prepared to share a little more info about that.
Do we know the timeline of this project? That is to say, when will it be open for occupants?
So there was a team of vendors who sat with me and my team. We have a timeline, we're estimating for the start of the school year, but it's possible that it may spill a few weeks into the school year. But there's a commitment to work hard to meet that initial deadline.
One additional, if that's okay. Our enrollment report, can that be modified to reflect this new building program numbers?
How it tricky because it's.
They're moving in and out, right?
Yes.
In and out.
It'll double dip.
Yeah, okay.
And it's not, it's not a school, it's a program. So they're not, it wouldn't show up as a school on our.
They're not permanently assigned there except for Project Uplift.
Students that are expelled or that's listed in our enrollment report already though, so.
They still have a home school.
Yeah.
Right, but they're listed separately in their report.
They are, but if it shows up as an additional enrollment, it would, it would be double dip.
The cover sheet, that's the summary, breaks it out, but it's in the subject sheets for Stratford High School or Bernal High School. So yes.
Right, and, and I, Mrs. Board, Board just can speak to this better than I can, but my understanding is that because they're suspended or expelled, they cannot be in school. That's part of the thing, so we can't list it as.
Right, because they will go back.
It is a program.
Except for uplift and expulsion, they'll stay.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so just, I guess, one comment though. The, you had commented about the building. The building, I think, is solid. There's something you said about those old block schools. The floors are in great shape in there. The, the only thing that would concern me, and you and I talked about it while we were there, would be the windows. And I don't know if the council has voted on their capital improvement plan for this year yet.
I'm doing it right now.
I heard they had a special meeting on a sneaking suspicion, but, but perhaps we can, we can have that assessed. And if, if, if it is our intention to use that building on a long-term scale to incorporate that, maybe bump that up because they were not, they were not the best windows.
No, and there was a reason why.
Yeah, we talked about it, yeah.
And we can't beat them up at that, for sure.
Any other questions regarding the AIP Honey Spot House project? Great. See now, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltse?
Yes.
Ms. Cupe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to table items. I will undertake a motion to take it to the table.
Motion to take residency off the table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Residency is off the table. Mr. Henry?
So it's the end of the year, and I don't know if you had a chance to formalize the year-end numbers on residency, but if you have, I think you said you did. How if you could give us a report on referrals and total outcome numbers?
Sure. Really, really proud of the work we've done in residency over the last two years. I think it's wholly understood and accepted that last year's work was marked improvement in this area, and we feel equally the same. Our residency officer is very efficient at what he does. And I think again, this year, it's similar to last year, where we realized some good progress. So this, through this academic year, we received a total of 120 submissions from our schools. We have about 70 cases that were closed and confirmed. 20 total cases of this enrollment, totaling 36 students. We have one student who was deemed a McKevy Vento student. One student I granted permission to graduate with their senior class. And then surprisingly, this year, we had a handful of families contest our conclusions. Four cases were heard by the impartial hearing officer. Two families were deemed to be non-residents. Three families were deemed at that level to be non-residents. One was granted permission to stay by the impartial hearing officer. And of the three families that were deemed to be non-residents, one was contested at the state level, and that case is slated to be heard this summer. So comprehensive work. I'm really, really proud of our progress in this area. We'll continue to stand up with this work.
So you had said 70 were closed and confirmed. Is, is that, did that, does that mean that they were investigated and determined to be Stratford residents?
Substantiated as Stratford residents. And oftentimes, what we find is that we have families to move within a community who never update their address. And that is reflected in some of these numbers.
And then the impartial hearing officer, is that somebody who is an employee of the Stratford Board of Ed? Or is that an attorney?
It's an attorney, no relation to the district.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions around residency?
Motion to return to the table?
Second.
There we go, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
All right, residency is back on the table, or back off the table. Bye-bye. We'll move on to committee assignments and reports. There are no committee assignments this month. The renaming committee did finish its posting for submissions for the English wing at Stratford High School. And we will be meeting at some point during the month of July to discuss what was received. And then hopefully, you know, we'll have a named English wing in no time. That's exciting news. Other committee reports, Ms. Carol Fabian, we heard so much from you. But if you'd like to give us any further updates, you met on June 14th as a special.
So we met on June 14th as a special meeting. We moved our meeting a day because graduation was pushed back a day, and we needed to be there. So we were introduced to the French two, the Spanish two curriculums. And then there was a much robust discussion over the new reading program that will be implemented as a soft launch, and then evaluated and rolled out further the following year. We celebrated the retirement of Dr. Gata, and we welcomed Dr. Daniels into her new position as the incoming assistant superintendent.
Wonderful. Mr. Kennedy, anything to add? Ms. Cupe, anything to add?
I wasn't there.
All right. But we will move on to finance. Ms. Wiltse, we've had two meetings since our last board meeting. Any updates for us?
Before I move to finance, I just wanted to compliment the curriculum committee. I don't believe in all of my history sitting up here to have so much before us. So congratulations on really good leadership. And we will be missed, Dr. Gata. Finance committee met June 21st, June 26th. We passed our budget and got a good update from Ms. Mangini for this meeting about where we're headed for year end on Friday. Our next finance committee meeting will be August 28th. Enjoy July.
Wonderful. All right. Moving on to school plan, planning met June 8th. Mr. Henry, Ms. Cupe?
Ms. Cupe, over here.
I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. So I think what we did.
You're so used to me doing the talking.
So yeah, so Ms. Board just came and did her presentation on the AIP project.
Yes, sir.
There was some discussion about the redistricting, the report that's coming forward. And I made the members aware that depending on how that report rolls out, we may need to have a special meeting over the summer and then, and just to keep their, you know, keep their powder dry in that, in that arena. But, but if it is, we'll call the meeting. We'll find a time that's, that's convenient for the membership so we can, we can expedite that process as quickly as it may need to be. If it's not something we're not worried about till next year, then we'll roll it out in August or whatever. But hopefully, we'll have some, some information in the.
On your phone.
So yeah, but I think for the most part, that was it. It's, it's been a good committee. We've got some good membership there, and everybody is ambitious about doing more, so.
You bet. It's awesome. Great, thank you. Liaison Board of Ed committee.
Did not meet.
Did not meet, that's right.
We had our final.
I guess, that's right. I forgot. All right, policy review, Ms. Cupe and Ms. Bedell?
We didn't meet, but we exchanged versions of the cell phone policy. And I believe, Kristen, you said the team is working on some disciplinary components in terms of the matrix that could be incorporated?
It was, to my knowledge, it was being incorporated into the student code of conduct and parts of that, so.
So we may want to hold off and edit the policy to include those, right? Is that what?
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you, ladies. An athletic review, Mr. Kennedy?
Not me.
Next year. Excellent. Other committees, any updates on CAPE, Ms. Cupe?
So you should have already received an email about early registration for the upcoming convention in November and the CAPE call for resolutions for the 2023 delegate assembly. The deadline for that is August 4th. So if there are any, you know, state rules pertaining to word of education and the work that we do, maybe local, anything that you feel like may be a barrier or changes that you would like to see, you can propose those as resolutions that CAPE would have go through their committee. And possibly, if they approve it, make it a resolution that that organization would try to work towards getting done with the legislation.
Exciting. And in case you guys have some time on YouTube, go to CAPE's YouTube channel, because Ms. Cupe is one of the stars. One of their videos about why one might want to become a board member. So if you have, I think it's only three minutes, it's worth it. You can watch Ms. Cupe being passionate about her work. It's amazing, thank you. CES, I was unable to attend their meeting earlier this month. Town building needs, Mr. Llewellyn is.
Yeah, Mr. Llewellyn's a member of plant planning, and also serves on the town building needs committee. But there was some discussion about the flooring that's going to be done at Bernal and Johnson? Johnson? Over the summer, so, and just, we had talked a little about where those, if there's a summer school program, where they're going to go out, it's going to get done. Now it's going to get implemented. But I think, and then some, some of the roofs are being completed, and the solar panels are being completed. And I think that was, that was for the most part it.
Yeah, solar panels are starting.
Yeah.
Great, thank you for that update. Any other committees or information?
Matt Chair?
Yes, sir.
So we had received the numbers for some of the chronic absenteeism a while back, and it's obviously an issue here in town. There was some, some discussion that followed afterwards. And one of the comments was about walking distances, distances for walkers and its impact on, on chronic absenteeism. And I think, and I remember when my kids were in school, the number was two miles, and it was as the crow flies. So, so, but from my house to flood, it's two miles, right? But if you're walking or you're driving, it's 3.2 miles. And if we're still going as the crow flies for our biology, just to give you some clarification, when I'm training for my 60-mile backpacking trips, I walk from my house to flood because there's some significant, and I do some other hills and some other walk along the way. But, but I, I take that walk because it's a very difficult walk. And the hill from, the hill from the bottom of the road up to flood, it's a steep hill, and especially at the tail end. So anyway, I, I would hope that, that whether it's through policy or through the administration or whatever it is, if it is, and I, I thought it'd been eliminated, my kids actually were on the border, so I was able to get them on the bus because there was, our neighbors were on the bus, two houses down, and we weren't, or something. But anyway, if that is having a significant impact on our chronic absenteeism for, for walkers, then, then I think it's a policy we really need to look at and, and maybe make some adjustments to it or figure out a way. Because three miles a day, I walk at three miles an hour. That's an hour walk each way. So an hour walk in the morning, and if it's raining, if it's, you know, it's tough. It's not, and for a kid that age, I mean, you know, they're little eggs and they don't. Although I did walk for, I did go for a walk with my niece, and she ran the whole way. They know how much energy, but, but anyway. But I, I think it's something that we should look at. And I think if it is having such an impact on our chronic absenteeism, it's, it's an issue we need to address. And hopefully, we can get some resolution for the start of the new year.
Mr. Henry, the no actually came from me because the comment you made about Stratford High School kind of hit home as, as the PTA president there. So I dug a little deeper to find out that, yes, 40% of chronic absenteeism is a reality at Stratford High School, but 90% of them live within that category. So if we would increase the four buses that that high school has to five or six, those kids would likely get on it and be at school. But they're not going to do it if they're going to be late, if it's raining, if it's snowing. And meanwhile, when Bernal has probably a greater, you know, scope of terrain, but they've 12 buses. And so when you're looking at the, the equity of what we're offering our kids and allowing them to get to school, I'd send it to policy, like, let's just please, let's not be our own barrier and create the problems ourselves. So I am hopeful that the committee will look at that and revisit going back because my family was also affected when it changed. My neighbors had a bus, and my kids didn't, to middle school, so.
Ms. Bedell, did you have something to add?
I was just going to add that as part of the discussion on redistricting,